I, we need to start by establishing the agenda.
I move to establish the agenda as published.
Second, all in favor of establishing the agenda as published, please say aye. All votes say nay. No nays and no abstentions, that passes by a vote of five to zero. So, um, tonight is a, a special meeting at which there will be no actions taken and no votes taken. We basically, I'm going to do an update for the community and then we'll have public comments. So. For those who don't know me, I'm Megan Typer, and I'm the Assistant of the Board of Directors. I'm going to start today, I'm going to start this update with, by describing some of the work the board has been doing on the superintendent selection process since May, when Superintendent Koloski announced her plans to retire next summer. Again, no action will be taken at this meeting, no vote will be taken at this meeting. So I'm going to begin by summarizing what we've done so far and identifying the next steps, then, then we'll open public comment. Please note that you can continue to request a slot for public comments until 6:30. You can find the instructions on the district website or his board desk. And also that public comment today isn't the end of the meeting rather than the beginning, so that people will know what they're commenting on. There will also be additional opportunities for public comment in the upcoming weeks. And as always, every email sent to the board, board@mercerislandschools.org is read by all directors. To begin with, the board's single most important job is to hire and supervise the work of the superintendent. Our board has taken this task very seriously. Our goal is to hire the best superintendent possible for our district, district going forward, and for that person to be as successful as possible. Some of the work the board has done so far on this topic took place in public meetings or in study sessions that were open to the public. We started weekly study sessions on Tuesdays at the end of August for this purpose. Some of our study sessions recessed into executive sessions, which are not open to the public. The reason for these executive sessions is that we realized early on that as a first step in choosing the next superintendent, we would need, first need to discuss whether or not to consider Dr. Fred Rundle, our district's deputy superintendent, as a potential internal candidate. This type of discussion falls under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 parentheses one parentheses G. This is the evaluation of a current employee's job performance, which must be done behind closed doors. We can assure you that those discussions were limited in nature, and we were assisted by outside counsel for the board in setting the parameters of those discussions and maintaining them. We are now ready to move on to the next steps in our work, which can and must take place in public. The next step is for the board to determine the process we will use to hire for this job. I've put together this summary to bring the community up to speed on what we have learned so far as a board. Number one, and as an aside, there will be an FAQ with all the same information added to the district website superintendent search page shortly. Okay, number one, we first took a look at the last superintendent search that was done in our district back in 2017. We learned about what was done then in terms of outreach, screening, interviewing, search costs, and making the final decision. We also learned about the current environment, which is very challenging, as it turns out, for superintendent searches. Resignations and early retirement are high in King County and throughout the region, truly across the nation. At one point earlier this year, more than 80 districts out of 295 in our state were looking for a superintendent. As a result, the candidate pool is shallow. Interim superintendents, we learned, are particularly hard to find right now. We also learned a bit about the difference between hiring from outside versus hiring from inside. The advantages of hiring from outside include, A, a more diverse range of candidates, and B, the possibility of finding a strong leader from elsewhere with new ideas, who might not, might not otherwise come to our district. The disadvantages of hiring from outside are, A, having to make a decision based on review of qualifications plus about four hours worth of interviews, versus potentially years of experience with an internal candidate. And B, it takes an external hire approximately a year to get to know a new district and to get up to speed on the job. The thought exchange feedback from our community recommended targeted improvements in how the district operates, but was generally favorable towards the district's overall direction. Number four, we also heard about hiring from outside Washington State versus inside Washington State. There are many aspects of how the school system is set up in this state, particularly with regards to school finance and bargaining, that are unique. All other things being equal, a candidate from in-state is more likely to already be familiar with these unique, unique aspects. Just to be extra clear, we were hearing about this type of thing during our study sessions, not during our executive sessions. Number five, finally, we learned about the cost of hiring a search firm. There are three levels of search, of search firm that we could hire. One would be a national level search firm. This could cost from $150,000 up. Option two would be a smaller, local type of firm that operates mainly within Washington State. The cost of this would be from $30,000 up. In both of these cases, we would need to put out a request for proposals, give two weeks for a response, et cetera. By the time a firm would actually be able to start working for us, six weeks would have gone by. A third option would be to hire the ESD, the Educational Service District, to help us. This would likely be lower cost, but we haven't looked into the details yet. The ESD does offer this service to a lot of smaller districts in Washington State. Obviously, given the current budget situation and the declines in enrollment, the board is unlikely to want to spend any money that it doesn't have to on this process. Number six, finally, in our executive sessions, we reviewed Dr. Rundle's qualifications and interviewed him. We have found him to be an extremely strong internal candidate with a strong interest in the job. He has been with the district for 13 years across two, across two superintendents. He has been a teacher, a principal, director of learning services, and has served in a variety of central administration positions, including multiple times as interim superintendent. He also served as acting superintendent last spring for six weeks when Superintendent Koloski was on medical leave. This is as far as we have gotten, and now that we are done reviewing Dr. Rundle's qualification, it is time for this discussion to come back into the public view. Our next steps will be as follows. At next Thursday's meeting, November 18th, we're planning to discuss and possibly take action on two items. The first will be a discussion and vote on what type of process we will, we will be starting. The second is a discussion and vote to delegate two board members of the committee to, to initiate the next stage of the process. As part of that November 18th meeting, we may also be discussing projected timelines for this important work, which the next seated board will pick up and carry forward. Um, again, tonight's statement will be condensed down into an FAQ and be available for, for reference. So we're now going to move to public comments. So far, we have just two public commenters, I believe. But there's still time for others to find it if they want. Oh, I didn't, I didn't, yeah. Yeah, there will be other opportunities for public comment, for sure. Okay.
Hello, I'm Megan Hamel.
Sorry, sorry, Megan, sorry.
Hi.
Oh, I have to read the disclaimer, which means I have to look it up on Word, just give me a moment.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Okay, this meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. If you would like to address the board on a matter of superintendent succession, please complete the form attached below and submit to the board secretary by emailing the completed form to michelle.muller@mercerislandschools.org no later than 6:30 PM. When addressing the board of directors at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Thank you. And sorry, hang on one second.
Meg has her camera off. If she wants to leave it off, that's fine. I just wanted her to know that it's off.
And Megan, your camera is off. If you want to leave it off, that's, you want to turn it on, that's fine too. Okay.
I will turn it on. I can't see myself, so I just hope it's not a really awkward angle. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I wanted to request the school board to take under consideration more transparency in the writing of and use of district policies, especially before a new superintendent is chosen. Transparency in the district policies would enforce high standards of ethics for all district employees. Currently, many district policies are written with too much room for interpretation, or district policies need to be written to address a void in current needs of the community. The district as a whole needs to have a procedure to determine how parents need for effective communication. The Americans with Disabilities Act is determined. For example, when parents request closed captioning transcript in IEP meetings, there should be a clear district policy in line with ADA that follows parents with disabilities to use the accommodation. Currently, it is the possibility to pick and choose who the admins want to use the accommodation based on what is convenient for that time. But ADA law is put into place partly to protect people with communication disabilities and to allow them to meaningfully participate in their children's IEP meetings. The district needs to also have a social media policy that protects parents in private social media groups and provides clear language to district employees about what is appropriate use of social media and what is not. District policy stating appropriate experts to be included in meetings is my third one, especially regarding neurodiverse students. For example, a policy that states in meetings for a student with dyslexia, a district dyslexia expert must be in attendance, or for a student with autism, an autism expert must be present, and so on. The district also needs to ensure these policies are fairly and equitably used, not when the district chooses to, when it is convenient, but every time the policy should be used, used a correct language and implementation. This would avoid any miscommunication between families and administrators as to what a district policy says versus how the district chooses to use it on a case-by-case basis. For example, if closed caption transcript is allowed in Zoom meetings, then it is allowed across the board, not determined by a staff member as they feel it is necessary. Thank you for listening and thank you for considering a change in district policies or inclusion of new ones.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Mike Westover.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the board taking input. I, I hope that's going to continue. I would say myself, reading the input through thought exchange and the 1,500 members of the community that commented was really eye-opening. And I, I hope the board is really going to take to heart the comments that the community provided, particularly the desire for the district to really be a beacon of academic excellence. There is, this came up a, a number of times over the last several months, as we talked about the direction of the district during the election, and I think there is a desire in the community for the district to not just be a leader in the state, but be a leader nationally. And I, I think we should really conduct a robust national search and look for a superintendent who can help to get us there. I think we've also heard the desire for transparency, and this is not just from the board, but really from the district in the way that the district has made decisions recently, and I think the feelings of the community over how those have operated at all levels of the district administration. And I hope the board will consider how to get a superintendent who can make that process, one that the community has more confidence in and where people feel that they're listened to. And then the third takeaway I had seeing those comments was really about listening. And it was remarkable to me that that came not just from parents, but also even from staff who felt the current processes in the district and administration, administration of the district were not listening to them, and they had a desire for greater listening throughout the district administration. So I, I hope the board will really take into account, looking for a district, for a superintendent who can lead the district and help to achieve all of those, really give us confidence, because this is a district that has great students, great support from the community, and really strong financial resources, and should be a strong one nationally. Thank you, and I hope you'll continue to, to take feedback from the community throughout this process.
Okay, um, we don't, oh. We don't currently have any other, um, people signed up for public input, I believe. But we did say we would keep it open until 6:30, so I think I'm going to kind of declare like a recess until 6:30, and then, then we'll come back in session at 6:30. If it is impossible, Andrew, you still put up a note to that, to that effect, so that if people log in, they'll see the meeting clock over.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, the board is, oh, sorry. The board is back in session. Um, we have just one more person signed up for public comment. That is Sarah Karim. Sarah, since we've been, I recessed here, uh, the board is a meeting of the board, sorry, the meeting is a meeting of the board in public. Not a public, no, I'm sorry, I'm not reading the right thing. Hold on, we find a correct disclaimer. Hold on, we find the correct disclaimer to read. Right, and the one who does. It's out. Very good. Public input. The meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. If you would like to address the board on a particular issue, please complete the form attached, et cetera, and submit to the board secretary by emailing the completed form, michelle.muller@misterislandschools.org, normally 60 minutes prior to the meeting. When interested in the board at the meeting, limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Thank you.
Hi, I just want to make sure that you can hear me. Yes, I see my script. Thank you. Um, and thank you in advance, as I deal with some crying children and making this comment. I just want to appreciate that the board has requested for public input. Two comments that I wanted to make. One is a question, is to know what specific elements of feedback the board is requesting from the community that could strengthen this search process. I saw comments that were made on the Thought Exchange. And when I found limiting about the Thought Exchange was I had a moment to participate, and now if I want to go back and read those comments, I'm unable to participate in the same way unless I start adding more comments. So having greater insight as to what the board is specifically looking for in terms of feedback would be helpful, especially because I have noticed polarizing comments that are made where oftentimes or sometimes individuals may or may not know that those issues could or could not fall within the ambit of what the superintendent is meant to do for the district. And secondly, a request about timely communication. I happened to find out about this public input opportunity yesterday on the Facebook group, on Scramble to Find a Vegas Sitter. I was unable to do so, and I had to figure out a way to communicate with Michelle to find out whether an online opportunity to participate was possible. And thankfully, I am here, but only had 10 minutes to get a public comment. And I just, it may not be reflective of a community, communication, a point of strengthening of communication, if you would be, that would allow more equitable participation, especially with advance notice. But having said that, I'm here, so clearly there are opportunities to participate. Thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, just, as I said, my open comments, looking ahead, we're going to be, the next board meeting will be November 18th, so Thursday, November 18th. There will be regular public comment at the beginning of that meeting. And as a side note to anyone who's interested, the Thought Exchange is still up for people to look at. It's not available for, you can't add to it anymore. Like, it's closed in the sense of you can't add any more comments. But you can look at it, you can click on it, you can rank things in terms of like most approved of, the least, you know, most starred, the least starred comments. And I'm still looking forward to doing a kind of deeper dive into some of those Thought Exchange results as we progress with this. Um, that brings us to an end for tonight's meeting. So this was just a very limited purpose meeting to kind of get an update out there, but please give it out for more communications from the board. Do I have a motion that is something to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please aye. No ayes, that's five zero. We are adjourned at 6:30 P M. Thank you so much to everyone for taking turns on this side and the other side of the screen.